Yeah. We entertained a couple of questions after we closed the public hearing. And I think there's enough concern expressed to, as Councilman Dixon said and as your suggestion, by your belief that it's inappropriate to do what was just done, that this can be revisited and refined going forward. Right now is, well until just now, it wasn't even addressed. So we have made one step, as Councilman Dixon said, toward hopefully getting it in the best interest of the community, preserve downtown business district as a business district, but with residential opportunities above the ground floor. That's what I heard. We can come back and deal with that detail and add it to it. I mean, so, all right, moving on. Item four, the addition of single-family conversion to condominiums as a permitted use by conditional use permit in R-10, R-5, CDC, and zoning districts. The floor is open for public comment.
Okay. This is where my big concern is because it pertains specifically to the historic-
Bridget.
Bridget.
Thank you.
I live at 137 Cotton Mill Circle. That's my home. I also own property in the corner of Elliot and McMullen, the old cotton mill office building, and we also are investors in Pembroke Hall to save that structure. Can you not hear me? Am I ... Can I hold again, girl, I'm a kid. Thank you. I tried to do as much due diligence on this as I could possibly do to make an educated statement up here. I couldn't find as much information as I wanted from previous council meetings, quite simply because, for some reason, MediaCom is not playing those things right now. I saw a couple of them early on that spoke to some of this. I would like to draw everyone's attention to the Town of Edington's vision statement for 2010 through 2020. The statement begins basically with the mayor and the town council formulated their direction and vision for Edington with the following statement as their guiding principle: "We see Edington as a town where history, hospitality, and natural beauty come together to form a community that is proud of its past, excited about its future. The mayor and town council recognize Edington's future prosperity depends upon protecting these assets through encouraging residents and welcoming visitors to become integral participants in Edington's unique community. With this in mind, the mayor and the town council's vision for Edington for the next decade is," and there are several numbered items here, I specifically want to speak to items four, five, and six. Number four, "to be a municipal government that works in collaboration with citizens and other governments to plan for and respond to citizens' needs and provide timely, efficient, effective, and consumer-friendly services." Number five, "to pursue appropriate, sustainable opportunities to grow our population and to be a home for young families and retirees while maintaining a strong sense of small-town values and citizen involvement. The town will preserve and promote its historic resources and unique downtown and focus on community attractiveness." Number six, "to be recognized as a desirable tourist destination, offering a wide variety of historic exhibits, water activities, cultural offerings, lodging, dining, shopping, and other attractions." To this end, and because I'm concerned about conversions in the historic district, I would submit that there currently exists an intact law that has supported this vision, and I believe if left intact, it will continue to support this vision and commitment as it pertains to the conversions of historic homes. The residential historic district will not benefit from adulteration by increasing the number of single-family dwellings allowed to occupy a structure. Basically, we're talking about apartments and condominiums here. This will no doubt translate to a financial gain for some business entities which at this point are totally unidentified. A number of single families currently allowed by law to inhabit an individual structure seems to me to be manageable, satisfactory, and sustainable for the population. Edington, after all, is not a metropolis. We are a population of less than 6,000. We, as members of the community, are all willing to accept every accolade and take every opportunity to tout Edington as a gem of a small town. I've heard some stated concerns regarding existing historically significant homes being located in what's a so-called commercial district. Prior to the meeting this evening, I believed that homes such as the Homestead on Water Street had never been considered a problem, the Homestead, rather, Francis English's home, and I believe it shouldn't be a problem now. I don't understand why these things cannot be, these historic homes cannot be significantly dealt with, recognized, and voted upon as a resolution and grandfathered in as a protection, or to deal with them by individually utilizing a variance ruling by process. None of this requires a law change that globally affects the entire designated historic district, a priceless area that we all value and have worked diligently to protect. In conclusion, I would submit to you that this issue should be further evaluated by not only council but a task force beyond the planning board, which should include resident-citizen representation, that it be more widely circulated for public consumption, especially to those individuals who be directly affected, which I believe will be all citizens, and that any special interest projects or business entities that stand to benefit directly by the law change be fully and accurately identified in this process and totally disclosed. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Bridget. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Susan Nolton, 208 East King Street, and I want to applaud Bridget for her excellent research and very diligent, and I just want to add that my feelings are very similar and, Councilman, I am disappointed that you're so quickly contemplating making a significant change to our beautiful town and that you would just do this without, I think Bridget's suggestion of having a committee work on this project and put some real thought into it in time is excellent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marge Dunn, and I've been here for 24 years, and the reason I'm still here because Edington is the most beautiful town that we will ever find. I've had guests here from Long Island for the Christmas tour. It actually blew them away. So it's most important that we keep the historic district as it is. Even the thoughts of having apartments in there or condos in these beautiful homes, especially the street I live on, Church Street, I would hate to see something like that happen. The big problem is, which I maybe haven't even thought about, is parking. Of course, you have to have a certain amount of property, but like everything else, when you have tenants in your house, they park on the street and try to control that. I just wanted to say that Reagan Cox and her husband is not for this, and they asked me to get up and talk, that just, and we didn't, if I knew it was going to be a serious problem, I truly would have campaigned, and it never, never would go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Creighton, 115 West King. I'm, I'll just ask a quick question. The thing we're discussing right now is wide open as it is tonight. We can take an old house and put a condominium in it with no approval.
Based on the number of units, if it was in the downtown commercial district, two units or less can be approved through the zoning officer. If it's in the R-5, R-10 district, four units or less can be approved without any oversight.
Is that the historic district?
The historic district makes up R-5, a little bit of R-10, the downtown commercial district.
So as of this moment, we can put condominiums in my house without both of the units?
Yes.
But wait just a little while before you pass this, because I want to get that done.
Well, and I think that, I think there's some misconception here.
Absolutely.
This is restricting what we can do significantly. This isn't expanding it. I mean, this isn't allowing somebody to go out and do it. This is saying, we're going to make it a whole lot harder to do it.
What you're doing, what you're doing, you're putting control on it.
We're putting some, there's no control now.
That's, that's the whole, we're trying to put some controls on it where there are no controls at this time. There's a total misconception here, a total misconception, in my opinion.
Yes, absolutely. And I did this last time, but it didn't air. So what I want to say is Charlie's house was a boarding house. It was five apartments. It was, it was turned by Julian Wood into a single-family residence. Malcolm and Debbie King's house, when I was a child, was a duplex. The house, the Joseph Hughes house had three families living in it until 1926, when it, when the Congress put it back as a single-family residence. The house that, that my brother owned, that now DeFaulis has lived in, two distinct families, it was a duplex. The Homestead had two families living in it. The Gramble Queen was a boarding house. The Sorenson's house was a boarding, boarding house. The house beside the Gramble Queen, the Makley House, it was a Makley Apartments. Even in my life, Neil O'Brien's house, the one he just sold, was a boarding house. So those conversions have all been converted back. So I mean, if anything's happening, it's going the other way. But there have also been some good, some good conversions. The building that Miles Cox did on Eden Street, it saved it. It wouldn't have been saved. It was done with federal tax credits. Swain, I think, was a good conversion. I think the cotton mill, everybody would say that's a good conversion. The apartments above downtown, they've been good, you know, the ones that Mr. Michener did and some more people, they've been good for our downtown, and they were done, I think, with tax credit, with federal historic tax credits.
You didn't get the credit, but you could have.
The Peanut Mill that Cy Rich did was a great conversion, and the Mill Store, probably the most, with the two that I know would have been torn down, or the Lee Bush House, that was a conversion, and that was a federal tax credit project. It made no sense to do it any other way than a historic tax credit project. It was done by Reed Thomas through all his stuff. I know about it because I did it, and, you know, it had no hope of surviving without, without a conversion. And then the Mill Store that Jennifer and Meter did into apartments, that is another building that had no economic viability without being, without some type of conversion, and it was a great job, and that's how you get federal tax credits, so, for historic structures. But I just don't understand why everybody's thinking we're getting ready to do this when, number one, the trend is the other way, and number two, this is making it much more restrictive. So, you know, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, because people have been coming up to me all, all week saying, "Why are you promoting dividing up these houses into apartments and condos?" And we're making it more restrictive, so, there you go.
I can speak to that, again, Bridget Bull. It's because in God we trust, and everybody else, they have to prove it. And the council bears the responsibility for educating the public on this, and it hasn't happened, quite frankly. And the other thing that is in the air and constantly being talked about right now is Pembroke Hall being turned into four condominiums and additional outbuildings placed on the property, and there are not too many people in favor of that.
But let me, that can't be, that can be done today, but if this is passed as written-
You have to get a permit.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's making it much more restrictive.
And that property is already subdivided, Pembroke Hall.
It's subdivided by the bank because the, because the, the bank owes those two, because of Mr. Smith's bankruptcy and all of that kind of stuff. At least, that's what we're told when we originally were asked to invest in that property. And again, my concern is, there's been no information out there available that speaks in any great depth to any of this, so it's no wonder no one understands it, if that's what you're telling me. My concern is, I don't want to see the historic district changed. If this makes it better, great. Show me something in writing that I can have in my hand that you're going to be held accountable to keep permanent after I've had the chance to do due diligence and read it all, because I couldn't find hardly anything. MediaCom is not constantly looping your presentations since, I think, the last one I saw was maybe April 14th or maybe one back in March. And I went on the town council site to see if perhaps it was available somewhere else, and the only thing I could find there is, that is supposed to air at 9:00 a.m. on certain days after the town council meeting monthly, but who can watch it at 9:00 a.m. because we go to work? We're working citizens. I counted on watching it in the evening. It's not been available. So you can't say that the public's been informed when, when your council meeting sessions are not available on TV, and there's nothing in writing that's available out there that I can pick up and look at. It's not on the website.
But I think in response to that comment, we can say that we are addressing something that currently isn't indicated, and is adding regulatory procedures to anyone and any, or any organization, business, individual, or otherwise who would want to come in and do those highlighted things in those zoning districts. This was all brought to our attention because it didn't exist, as Sambo said a minute ago. And what we're doing here is taking the steps necessary to address it and put mechanisms in place whereby people who want to do such things would have to come and get a conditional use permit. Now, maybe some clarification on what that means might be in order also, because conditional use permitting is not what we're doing here tonight. This is your, your opinion and ours. Conditional use permitting is a quasi-judicial hearing where you can only present evidence. You have to present appraised property values from a licensed deposer, for example, if you think it's going to downgrade the surrounding property because of what's getting ready to happen in your neighborhood. It is different, and it's a very strict process. People take statements, oaths to present truthful and accurate information before the town council, and it can be appealed through the judicial system, so. This, as it exists now in its proposed state, would require that for any of those three highlighted uses of buildings in those zoning districts to take place. And again, this was brought, when we hired a professional to help us with planning in other areas of the community, this was brought to our attention as something that was wide open and needed to be addressed, so.
And that's why we started talking about it.
Correct.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm Susan Nolton. I'm still confused about why it says addition of condominiums in townhouses as permitted use. If it already is, why, why are we adding that? It doesn't make sense.
It's by practice, it's not by definition, in my understanding. Is that correct? I mean-
The oldest is old.
For number, are you on number four?
Well, actually, three and-
Three and four.
The use of condominiums in townhouses, those words and the-
It's permitted use, so if you're saying it already is permitted, what way-
We're defining, we're adding the definition of condominium. That has not been previously a definition, and that, generally condominiums in townhouses mean the same thing in terms of real estate, so that's a definition.
They really don't. It's legal ownership, they're entirely, they're different.
Were apartments on the UDO?
Apartments were not. They are defined, they would fall under the multi-dwelling category, where you eliminated that use in the R-40, the R-20, the R-14, and the R-10 zone.
But it, number five here refers to family conver, single-family conversion to duplex or apartments.
Correct. That's, that's new language, and a duplex, of course, means two, and then apartments would be more than two.
But they were previously allowed. I mean, that's, that's what, and this is restricting that.
Rental, so we're renting, so.
I want, because you're, just one, okay, because you're all familiar with our house, which was a boarding house, and we said today, because when we bought that, we didn't even get tax credit. Now, we could convert that thing back into the bond house. If we've had people, so, keep, why don't yourselves make a bed and breakfast?
Well, because, okay, well, it's not zoning for bed and breakfast, but unless we pass this, you could do that with no problem. If we pass this, it's going to be a whole lot harder.
I'd like to make it a lot harder.
Yeah, and so that, and that's what it is, you have to do it by conditional use permit instead of just by zoning administrator.
Well, I think one of the things that would be helpful, because I'm a businessman, and we've got our council and all, but now, I've been here 21 years, I think, like, well, I'd make up committees to local people that may, let us have some voice in some of these changes and restrictions.
You can also, yeah, you can also put a private covenant on it, like I've done on my house, so it can't, that can't ever happen. So you do that with preservation.
I mean, there's a lot of brains in this room that could be used for the future. I mean, one of the great ones, some kind of, I talked to Mayor Vaughn one time, like, people just love history and old buildings. One time I grew up, we were going to have an incentive to, like, take, like the Vaughns' store there and take it back to the original front, and give people the incentive. Maybe people just die for those. People go all over the country looking for old looks, and what we did in the '50s and changed everything in Edington, it'd be great if you could just take it back the way it used to look.
Well, and we do, I mean, this isn't my show, but this is, you know, we do have a facade grant, and we do, we do also have-
Not who wants to have it for as tourism.
Yeah, we have a facade grant through Destination Downtown, and we also have federal tax credits, the historic tax credits that allow people to do that.
I hope they can maybe develop a little input committee that could, we've got some changes we have to make there.
We're trying.
And Mr. Sorenson, let me also say, we've, every year, we run ads in the paper asking people to be on the planning boards and all these boards. Please, if you want to be on a board, fill out an application. I mean, we beg people, and that's, that's who we send this to, is the planning board. They reviewed it, we've reviewed it, they've reviewed it again. I mean, we want people to buy.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As, Marge, I just want to say, my name's Kurt Noah, the one on 11 West Church Street. Marge, I don't want to see any apartments or condominiums on our floor. I want to see the Steely's house broken up, and I want to see Steve Williams' house broken up. But as chairman of the town planning, this is great. We're pretty serious, we're putting restrictions on it. It's got to go through two bodies, groups, the planning board, council.
Where's the publication on all of it? So that we could have a better understanding before this meeting.
Well, I think it was in the paper, was it not?
Oh, yeah.
There is not much in the paper. I mean, I'm, what I'm speaking about, where can I get a hand on? What you're all saying, as I'm hearing you say this evening, sounds very positive. I'm very happy about that. I have a graduate-level education. Where's the document that I can read word by word and line by line?
It's on the wall right now. I mean-
That's it?
That's the use table for the UDO.
Use table, but it doesn't tell me-
It's a public record, if you would like to check it out at Town Hall.
Oh, I gotta get down and buy one.
No, it's, it's free for you to, to read and digest.
I'm pretty good about doing due diligence.
Yes, sir.
Every place I call, I got them.
Are you discussing for or by, or did you join them?
Well, hopefully, moving on to number four. We've done three, and we had the public hearing, or having the public hearing on four.
Mayor, can I, can I say one thing? I am really concerned what this lady with the blue dress on says while I go, that she cannot believe what we're doing to the historic district. We're trying to improve it. I, I'm hung up on that.
But wait a minute, you're opening the door. Nothing maybe five, six, seven, eight years-
No, we're closing the door. We're making it much more difficult for these things to happen. Right now, they can do it, as Charlie Creighton said a few minutes ago.
Right, but it could happen. We don't want it to be could, we want never.
We're closing the door, ma'am. That's, that's what we're doing. We're trying hard to close the door.
Yeah, they don't do anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They have to do something where it cannot happen.
That's the past night, isn't it?
Right, it just cannot happen. As tonight, normally in a historic district, it's condos or apartments, it's over.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do. I'm not on the planning board, and I'm not on the council, but what I've heard them say tonight is that if we don't do what's proposed, anything can happen with no restrictions. If we do what's proposed, something can happen after it goes through two or three levels of restrictions. So we are tightening it up, we're not eliminating, but maybe the next meeting, they'll eliminate. But at this point, they've got to start tightening it because it's very loose.
That's it, tighten it up and get it over with.
So, and I agree with Bridget, I haven't seen a lot on it, but what I, what I think I see, Bridget, is, is what they're saying is law, and so if this is passed by law, it's then got to go through a number of things, and as Mayor Vaughn said, appraisal, any, any depreciation of property value, adjoining what might be proposed will be addressed, whereas now, that doesn't get addressed.
Except for the variance.
Say what?
Except for the variance, correct. In North Carolina, variances are, have to be made based on findings of fact and based on certain conditions. It, it just can't be a whimsical decision, well, okay, we'll give you a variance, so we don't, you know, people, it's, it's, that's not a good example of how an issue like this would, would be handled. Variances have to do with, well, it, a variance has to do with very specific technical, not usage, but situations.
Yeah, we got a variance to set the lighthouse out over the water, for example. Prior to getting the variance, it had to stay on land. And we've made an appeal to a governing body that regulates things out over the water, and that's why I got where it is.
I'm convinced that you're doing the right thing, and I've got a chance to do it if my brother-in-law's, so I'm going to leave.
Thanks for coming. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on item number four, single-family conversions to condominiums? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, John Burchard, 11 West King Street. I'd just like to ask for clarification to permitted changes. If you do permit one of these changes, does that mean that the ground-level space no longer stays retail? Because that's a definite threat to viability of the downtown. I can give you examples and so forth over the years, how spaces that have been used with this purpose today are not as retail-oriented in terms of drawing people, traffic, whatever, as the predecessors. So my question is, when you start defining permitted transitions, is that going to exclude a transition from the ground floor being a residence to being retail to a non-retail use?
We had a lengthy discussion on that about a half hour ago between two council members, and we're going to address that now that we have step one out of the way. We, we made the comment that there was enough discussion about the concern of ground-floor use that we would revisit this with that thought in mind, so.
Well, I didn't hear that deal word to me, retail, and that's why I wondered what was being assumed.
We cannot, I doubt we can get into retail versus service versus, I don't know what the law is, I, I mean, property owners do have certain rights. I think we might find a way to prevent residential use of, because there is precedent for that, right, Sambo? And-
Mayor Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
What's my saying? I think the planning board stands ready to do further study on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I think it's a great thing to do. And I think it's a great thing to do. I mean, I'm all, I'm with you.
Okay. April, do you want to say anything?
I just want to ask a question, April Lane. Um, we, I understand that your goal here, apparent goal, is to put some restrictions on the possibility of dividing up properties either as a condo or town. Is there, is it possible, or is this not even of consideration under law, that you can suddenly outlaw something? So we've looked at it two ways. Right now, there's no mention, so I could go in and say, I'd like to divide my house up, and if I need the square footage of the lot, the square footage of the house, and all the other conditional uses, if we have the conditional uses, I could do it, I mean, if we pass it on to the next step. Is there a third alternative? Is there an alternative where it's just ruled out altogether? And I'm just talking about the dividing of already established properties. I just have a question.
I would say it's possible if you would just put covenants on your house with Preservation North Carolina.
Yes, that makes care of it, that doesn't take care of...
Yeah, and more orange, I mean, everybody, that'd be a great thing to do, if we all did that, you know, I've done that, and I would like to think we could leave the pact for everybody to do that to protect, because that not only protects against use, that protects against, you know, demolition by neglect and everything else. So it's probably the best tool we have to preserve Eaton as it is. I think that there are times when, in order to save houses, you need to be able to access these federal historic tax credits, and that's why I think you need some flexibility in some of these houses. Because, I mean, if you look up and down the historic district, they have been used a lot, and that is what has saved, it might have saved the Blair House, it was torn down and taken to Massacre, if that could have been an office or something, you know, it saved, the historic tax credits saved Chris Reynolds' office when that was moved, it saved Peter Bowlen's office when that was done. Those are all things that were done with, you know, through the use of some combination of these things, and those buildings will be gone, so, you know...
I'm just getting that, I'm saying, and I fully agree with you in all of that, but is there another altern, I mean, are you saying that we need to use the, we want to protect the use of the tax credit, and if indeed we were to outlaw the division of these properties, then we have eliminated our individual opportunities to use the tax credits as we want? So is there another alternative? I'm not suggesting that we do it, but is there another alternative, which is simply to outlaw the, or to zone out, or whatever the correct term is, the division or the dividing up of individual properties?
That's what Bob's advocacy...
That's exactly what I want.
Yeah.
Within the historic district specifically. And without doing that, I think we're wrong, just totally wrong with this.
And I think we would lose a whole bunch more houses by doing that. That's my take, all right? I think we would lose all the houses on the, you know, that need to be restored. I think we'd lose them. I think things down your street are gonna be, are gonna have some really cool things done with them. I think these neighborhoods are coming back, and I think that we got some really great fundamentals going on right now with all we're doing. And I think we need to have a full range of opportunities available for the use of historic federal tax credits. We don't have any state ones anymore.
We don't have it.
We have federal. We, they, the federal's still there, the state's gone.
But we don't have the state.
And that was the only living, that wasn't in conversation.
Well, I'm beginning to hear repetition.
Yes, sir. I'll be quiet.
We're at item four, and the chair would entertain a motion to pass...
Stand up in the back, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Pat Grother, the Mill Village. I think that what people are having a problem with is the fact that you are saying as permitted use by conditional use, so that still kind of leaves the door open, because even though it goes through the process and you may really not want this to happen, you've still got that conditional use to go through. So it could possibly pass, if someone came and made the request under this conditional use.
That would be up to the board seated here at that time.
But still, you're putting, a person may want to do it, they'll go through the process, and it's not cheap, and then they'll get told no at the end, or will they get told yes? And I think that's where the problem lies.
And I've talked way too much tonight, but, okay, so they come to us and they say, we want to do the Eaton cotton mill, which is an abandoned factory falling in. We say probably yes, because I think it's been one of the best economic drivers that we've ever done. And not many people were for it when it was done, and nobody thought it could be done. So that is a conversion, that is what we're talking about. So if you say you can't have that in any zone, then you can't, we couldn't have taken that cotton mill and converted it. And I think everybody would agree, that's been one of the greatest economic drivers that Eaton's ever had. So I'm just saying, you've got to have some flexibility. You say absolutely no, then you mean absolutely no, no conversions, you know.
It did add $13 million to the tax base.
But if we said no, you know, then we wouldn't have...
But this would be done by case-by-case basis.
Sure.
Yes, I understand, but I'm just saying that maybe that was question one, if that's clear around, it's lying.
So is that considered?
That it is.
But in some cases, it might be the best.
Okay, I'm gonna call an end to the public hearing on item four. We've written in the hypotheses and so forth, and we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt this as presented. All the comments, believe me, are well-known and will be reviewed by the staff going forward, because public input is a very, very valuable part of this process, and we are appreciative of your offering it here this evening. So with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to approve number four.
Somebody, say.
We have a motion and a second to add this conversion also to the use chart. Any further questions or comments?
I can't help it, Mayor. Here's still, the wording of this is single-family conversion to condominiums. By having it on the UDO, you're opening the door. Obviously, I'm outvoting, but I can't help sharing my opinion, and I have a lot of reasons that I'm not going through, out of courtesy to you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no.
No.
All right, there's one dissenting vote. Thank you very much. Next, we're working our way down to this particular item, which I think we've talked about in great depth already, but anyhow, we'll open up a public comment on number five, addition of single-family conversion to duplex or apartments as permitted use by the same conditions we've been talking about. Would anyone like to speak on number five? Pro or con? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Carl, 218 Queen Street. I'm very concerned about this historic district. I agree with Mrs. Lane. You have a nice yellow line up there on multiple family dwellings, which you removed. I'd like to see the same clear line all the way across single-family dwellings. Every time you take a single-family home out of a single-family home, you have turned it into possibly a duplex. What happens then is you get multiple people who have nothing to do except for come and go, they're not part of the neighborhood, they are degrading the neighborhood, they are bringing in all of the stuff that goes with transient people. That includes multiple traffic, it includes all kinds of other issues, including not making good neighbors. When we have multiple tenants in places, and I live in a neighborhood around the corner, from that type of situation, where several multi or single-family homes were converted into multiple family homes. Small rooms, small places, people coming and going, not enough parking, single driveways for triples or triplexes, and it has brought in drugs, it has brought in alcohol, it's brought in bad language, it has brought in people coming and going because you don't know who your neighbors are because they're transient. I think you should draw a white or a yellow line all the way across single-family conversions as Mrs. Lane suggested, and not allow them in the historic district. All right? Irregardless of all the money that the government pays people to convert these, there's not that many more houses in town that we should do that to. I can see several houses on my block that could be converted to duplexes. I don't want to see it, because if that happens, you are really hurting Eaton as a place to come. When people walk from the cotton mill down to Queen Street to get downtown, if you had a bunch of people in there who were coming and going and sitting on the porch and doing all the kinds of things that I see going on, they're not going to stay here. They're going to go someplace else. This will not be the prettiest little town in the South anymore. So I really think that when you're talking single-family, I'm not arguing the others. I haven't said a word on those. When I, when you get to single-family homes, I've done my share of conversions. No, I have not. I refuse to. Yes, I've bought some houses. But every one of them's a single-family house that has just stayed that way, and I will keep, well, I'm not going to keep them that because I've run out of time and energy and money, but I, I'm kind of, you know, I really, you know, I, I see wanting to, I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to really maybe put the hammer down on this happening, but as Mrs. Lane said, if, you know, if somebody can come before you, like this gentleman here, who had opposition and still get approval, not to say that he shouldn't have, but, and still get approval, somebody across the street from me could come in and still get approval, and they would be transient, and my neighborhood would go downhill. And that's, if that's what you guys want, vote for it, please. Mr. Quinn, I got your vote. I know you're gonna say no.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
The rest of you, think about it, okay? I know some of you own property, I know some of you have converted them to multi-family dwellings. Yes, let's turn them back into one house. Okay? Yes, my house was five apartments. I kicked them all out, I turned it back into one big house, I don't know how many rooms I got, how many square feet, doesn't matter, my dog runs through it all, okay? Sometimes I can't even find their ass, okay? But please, think of the downtown, think of the historic district as a historic district, and keep it as that, not as a place to convert anymore. Don't allow any more conversions. Listen, I mean, yes, there've been a lot of conversions back, okay?
That's good.
And it is good. But let's not try to get any more. That's all I'm asking, don't do any more.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Nancy Star, 76th and King Street. Do we have to do this tonight? Can we postpone this vote until we all have more time?
This has been in the works six months.
Yeah. Well, I know, but...
This is a long, ongoing process that we're doing with...
And it's much more restrictive today than it wa, if we pass it, then we could always go back and rock on if we, you know, if we need to.
Sure.
I mean, that's, this makes it much more restrictive tomorrow than if, what he's talking about can be done just with the, with a pen right now. So this is making it much more difficult to do.
It still doesn't make sense. If it's single-family, how could it just be done, converted to condominiums or apartments? Now, if it says single-family, that makes no sense. Doesn't single-family mean one family?
We don't even have that definition in the use table. It just...
It doesn't, oh, it doesn't say...
It doesn't define, yes.
It's done in the text.
Okay, anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am?
Pat Grother from the Mill Village. The problem that I would have with this to making a single-family into a duplex is that Eaton is already at 58% rentless, and that's already too high.
Amen.
Even the Mill Village has too many rentals, and we're not supposed to have one.
Mayor, I've got a question. Have we seen more people come into the community that are looking for rentals? Is that happening? Are retirees coming down here looking for rentals?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Smart one, someone is.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just to give a brief answer. The rental market is a big transition. I mean, we're like, we're bringing in new teachers for the school system, Colorado, Minnesota. We have young couples that their marriage started off great, but after four years, things are difficult. He needs a separate place to stay, she needs a separate place to stay. I've got a request right now for a man that wants to relocate from Raleigh, working on one of the local plans, with some problems in his background. But he's a relatively young person, so I don't see the demand for rentals coming from retirees. I see it coming from the middle age of, say, 20 to 40. I do have one or two older tenants, and it's been just right for them. But the majority over the last few years, since I started this in the eighties, have been single, or in divorce, delayed, younger, less than four years delayed. That's where I've seen the market. I don't know, I have to compare this with Mr. Dixon or anyone else that knows rentals. But to help answer Craig's question, I don't see apartments as critical to getting people to relocate here and retire. It's for a different part of the population.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Can I say anything? The way that you like that...
I'm getting ready to close the public hearing, then, yeah.
Well, when you close the public hearing, I'll speak.
Okay. All right. Public hearing is closed on item number five. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt item number five as presented.
Somebody, say.
Motion and a second to do so.
Now, we're gonna have a discussion on that.
Sure.
Okay. I just want to point out very quickly that Eaton has got 2,581 housing units, of which 2,075 are currently occupied, 273 are empty or for rent, 161 houses are for sale. Rentals represent 51.5% or 1,069 of our total occupied housing. 56% of those rentals are subsidized. 42% of our homes, or 48% of our homes are homeowner, in a state that's 67.3% homeownership. The entire United States is 66-point homeowner. One of the very basic and major measures of economic stability of a town or a community is the percentage of homeowners versus rentals. I, I, we don't need the rentals. Mayor, I am still stuck here one more time, and I don't want to go through it again like, I mean, I guess sometimes we have to, but if they can do anything they want to do right now, and we are putting kind of a restrictive covenant on this, this has got to be better than doing nothing. Now, we can come back and outlaw everything if we want to, but this has got to be better than doing nothing. It's got to be. I mean, we, we have the door...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute. We have this door wide open, as we have said 100 times tonight, that anybody can go in there and do anything they want to do. Wide open. And we're trying to at least close the door. Maybe we're not putting a lock on it, but we're closing the door. And if we come back three months from now and want to put a lock on it and say we're not going to allow anything to happen, we've got that priority to do that, right here.
We have that priority to do it right now. We're doing something that's going to add another level of decision-making, and we have all admitted at this table that what we're passing is not appropriate.
Bob, I've been working on this with the planning board for six months.
We've been working together.
And all of a sudden, it just comes up tonight, let's lose everything.
It came up, I've been saying the same thing the whole time.
But I've got to agree with Councilman Dixon on that. So we locked the door completely. And then all of a sudden, we get another chance to do an Edenton Cotton Mill.
I know, the Edenton Cotton Mill is not a single-family dwelling.
You're right, you're right, it's not.
I'm talking about single-family homes converted to a downgrade of apartments.
Mr. Mayor, I call for a question.
Thank you, sir. We have a lot of committee work to do that we can do at the committee meetings.
I am too.
And so, does anyone else have a comment or item of discussion relative to the motion for single-family conversion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, the ayes have it. Councilman Bowen has indicated to me that he needs to leave the meeting. So, sir, you are excused.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your participation.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too.
Tomorrow night, I'm.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay, I'll see y'all then.
We may still be here. We may still be here.
When you come back, bring some breakfast. Okay, public hearing, last one. Addition to the two-family dwelling duplex permitted to use the words "new construction." Could we have a little enlightenment on that, please?
Yes, when we were working on the planning board's recommendation, well, when they were having their discussion, they discussed it at two meetings. There was a question about the way the chart was written, that we were allowing conversion of single-family to two-family duplex. But when you looked at the use table, if you did not have a use for "new construction," it looked like you were not allowing new construction of duplexes. You were allowing conversion, you were allowing duplexes to be created through conversion, but you were not allowing duplexes to be created by new construction.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, ma'am. I'll open the floor for public comment on the addition of the two-family dwelling duplex to include new construction. Anyone have anything to enlighten us with on that one? Okay, seeing no one, close the public hearing relative to item six and call for a motion to use the words "new construction" as presented. Okay, we're going to die for a lack of.
I'll look for motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much.
I think everybody's worn out.
Discussion on this item, council members. Okay, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, the ayes have it. Thank you all very much. That concludes our public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. You're certainly welcome to stay and hear the remainder of our agenda. But couldn't fault you if you wanted to be someplace else either. Thank you again for your input. Rust assured that it will be evaluated. We value your opinion and hope you'll come back and share it with us again. Okay, next item on the agenda are our committee reports. Tonight, we're hearing from just one, the Finance Committee. Councilman Dixon, please.
I have never been so happy to get the tax relief. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, they will be dealt with as presented. Anne Marie is going to walk us through both items on the new business tonight. So, item A, please, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor, very exciting news. And the council has been briefed on this the last several meetings, but it appeared, well, we have actually received all of the agreements that the council will need to review in order to take action on the proposed sale of assets between the Power Agency and Duke Energy. The town, as a member of the Power Agency, must conduct a public hearing on the ordinance. And you received in your packet a copy of the ordinance. And the ordinance would allow for the council to do several things. One, to approve the asset-for-purchase agreement and the full requirements purchase power agreement between the agency and Duke Progress. The ordinance would also, Marie, we're getting a lot of feedback, a lot of squealing. Thank you, Glenn. The ordinance will also give the council's consent to authorize the new debt service support contract. There'll be some debt that will have to be financed that is not going to be covered under the transaction deal. There'll also be a new full requirements power sales agreement that the town will have to execute, and then also terminate the existing agreement. Tomorrow evening, here at 6:00, we'll have representative from the Power Agency to come walk us through the transaction. Hood Ellis will also be with us. And actually, our friends from Hertford, the town council from Hertford is coming, so it'll be a joint meeting. You received yesterday a copy of the report from the consultant that was hired by the council to do sort of the second opinion review of the agreement. So hopefully, you'll have time to review that. There'll be no action taken tomorrow evening. That's for information purposes. And then we've invited Hood to come back to your work session meeting on May 26 to answer any questions that you may have. And then ultimately, on June 9, conduct the public hearing and hopefully take action on the transaction. Everything is happening really quickly. In the management report over the weekend, we explained some reasons why. It's all good, but it is, the time, the clock is ticking. The agency had 90 days from the date that the governor signed the legislation. And every week, there's been some important steps taken to get us to this point. So with that bit of background, Mayor, if you can ask for a motion and a vote to set June 9 as the date for the public hearing on the ordinance, that's what we're requesting tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair would entertain a motion to sit. Any further discussion, questions?
Anne Marie, just out of curiosity, I'm sure you probably read the article in Debt Advance today that one of the reporters in Elizabeth City had written. Was that just?
He was just saying if we didn't get out and stuck with it to, it would take to 2035. I don't know why I would have written that.
It was a difficult article for me to comprehend. I actually printed it, and I was going to try and read it. I was going to try and read it.
It absolutely was.
Later.
It didn't make really any good sense.
No, it didn't. I didn't hear you say that, because I thought the same way.
There was a lot of technical information. I actually sent the article to Electricity's and hope that they can help dissect it with us tomorrow.
Well, I think the basis of it really was if we don't vote for it, it's going to last 2035 before there would be a change. And that's true. That's the only thing I can get out of it.
It was very confusing.
It got a lot of attention.
Got mine.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All in favor of the June 9 date, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next piece, retail rate design.
Mayor and council, I'm not assuming that you're going to approve the transaction, although I certainly hope that you will, along with all 31 members, because I think there'll be good economic benefits derived to our retail rate customers. But in anticipation that the deal does go through, we will have to make adjustments on our retail rates. The wholesale rate decrease for the town is projected, and it's on an average, and that it's very, you know, dependent on weather cycles and what have you. But we're, and when I ran my spreadsheet comparing the wholesale rate reduction month by month for the last 12 months, it does average out to be 16 percent. But some months, it was only 7 percent, some months, it was 20 percent. So it's complicated stuff. Just because we're going to be hopefully enjoying a 16 percent wholesale rate decrease does not mean that we automatically decrease our residential rates by that amount. It's an enormously important and, you know, we've got to get it right the first-time exercise. And I don't feel, I don't have the skills, I don't have the technical expertise to do this work. And most other member cities are contracting out. They're working with engineers and analysts, who, this is what they do. They help electric distribution companies with retail rate design. We solicited three proposals. They were very competitive in their pricing. I think all three could do a good job. What it came down to, me, when I made my recommendation to you, is who can do the work in the most timely manner? Several of them wanted at least three months to do the work. And I don't think you want to wait. When July 1 rolls around, you want to be able to give that retail rate reduction to your customers as soon as possible. Booth and Associates is doing a lot of work for member cities. I plugged in some dates with them. I told them that if the council were to approve the agreement with them tonight, when would be the earliest they could get back, get their report completed? And it would be mid-July. Their staff, you saw their resumes. I think they're very technical. They are doing the work for Elizabeth City. I was hoping we could enjoy some benefit of saving on travel time, but it's not going to work. I think their proposal was $12,000. And the mayor pointed out to me, thank you, Mayor, I hadn't thought of this, Electricity's is offering each member $5,000 in this fiscal year to use for special projects. I don't think we've allocated that yet. Glenn has some ideas of some things, but we could allocate that. It doesn't just have to be allocated towards the consultant that Electricity's put forward. So we could use that for our proposal with Booth, and that would lower your costs by $5,000. So my recommendation that you authorize us to work with Booth and Associates to perform this study for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone make a motion to that effect?
Some would.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Do we sign a contract with Booth and Associates to perform electric retail rate design? Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? All right. We'll contact them ASAP. Thank you. Items considered timely and important. Council, have you got anything you want to bring before the group tonight? Okay, we'll shift that question out to our audience. Anybody in the public sector that would like to bring anything to the attention of the town council, please stand and state your name. We'd be happy to hear from you.
Holler at our Pat.
All right. We'll close the public comment portion and move for adjournments. Going to get a motion. All right, meeting adjourned.